This meeting is being broadcast live to our YouTube channel. Members, I shall be grateful if you could all join with me for a moment's silence. We will remain seated as we remember Clive, Alan and Joe. Thank you, members. Thank you, members. Before we move on to the business on the agenda, I would just like to remind you of the housekeeping rules for the meeting. You will note that measures are once again in place for social distancing and a one-way system is in operation. If you need to leave the main hall at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave and re-enter the room. You must wear a face mask if you need to move around the hall. However, you can remove your face mask when you are seated. The external doors will be open periodically to provide ventilation. Any requests to speak must be made using your voting handset. The instructions on how to do this have been placed on each table. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of the committee team will assist you. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and wait until one of the microphone operators is in the proximity. The microphones are being wiped down after each use. Be patient with the staff as they do their best to coordinate these arrangements. I will now move on to today's business detailed on the agenda. Item one, the minutes. Can I have a mover, please? Second, please. The minutes held on the twenty-third of June 2021, are these minutes agreed, members?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can I move on to item two, declarations of interest? Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Members? Can you stand up, please?
It's to declare an interest under item fourteen, which is the motion by councillor Kevin Shaw in relation to Haswickfield Detention Centre. It's a community interest and I'll be leaving the meeting. Thank you, Chair.
It's been noted, thank you. Anyone else? Back of the room?
I also need to declare an interest on the same item and I'll also be leaving the meeting.
Any more members? Okay, we'll move on to item three, chair's announcements. I have no announcements for today's meeting, so we'll move on to item four, the leader's report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report, please?
Right, thanks, Chair. Since we last met, COVID infection rates have continued to increase across the country and across the county. However, we have been working closely with our partners to provide targeted communications in specific communities where rates are highest, reminding people to follow public health guidance and encouraging them to take up the offer of both doses of the vaccine. Pop-up vaccination clinics offering first and second doses have also taken place. As part of the LA seven group of local authorities, we have launched the Keep the North East Open campaign. Featuring businesses from across the North East, the campaign urges people to continue to do all they can to keep the virus at bay so that our region can remain open. The initiative is backed by Northumbria and County Durham Local Resilience Forums, which includes councils, third sector organisations, the NHS, Blue Light Services and public transport bodies. At this month's cabinet meeting, we approved the latest update to the Authority's medium-term financial plan. The MTFP, which sets out the council's long-term funding outlook and cost pressures, reveals that significant ongoing financial uncertainty is making it extremely difficult for the authority to plan ahead. By approving the MTFP, we also agreed to continue the council's local council tax reduction scheme, which for the past eight years has offered eligible residents a discount of up to one hundred per cent on their council tax charge. We are the only authority in the North East and one of just a handful nationally to have maintained the scheme in line with the old council tax benefit system despite funding being reduced. More than fifty-seven thousand residents in the country currently benefit from this support, including thirty-six thousand work-in-age claimants and twenty-one thousand pensioners. This has always received cross-party support and I hope it will continue to do so in the future. This month, we found out that we have been successful in our application for a grant of one point two million from the National Heritage Lottery Fund to support county-wide activities and temporary exhibitions linked to the new history centre. This money will be used to support an innovative digital programme, including a dedicated website and the digitisation and cataloguing of thousands of photographs, objects, maps and other historical documents. Acliff Secure Unit in Newton Acliff has retained its outstanding status following a recent Ofsted inspection. The home provides specialist accommodation for vulnerable young people aged between ten and eighteen, many of whom have had complex problems and need intensive support to help turn their lives around. Our thanks go to Selwyn and the team in securing this outstanding rating once again. The past month has also seen the reopening of more of our venues and facilities. Bynchester Roman Fort reopened on the first of July, offering the chance to see and discover what life was like for Roman soldiers. Meanwhile, live shows are now returning to Gala Theatre in Durham and Empire Theatre in Concert, with outdoor performances also set to take place in our parks. And measures put in place to control at household waste recycling centres at the beginning of the coronavirus pandemic have now been removed. Traffic management systems set up in May last year to support the safe reopening of the sites during the pandemic are no longer in place at most centres. Our community action team is currently working in the South Mua area as part of its latest eleven-week scheme to identify and tackle the community issues that matter most to residents. Teams from across the council are working with representatives from partners, including police officers, firefighters, Housing Association, Groundwork North East and Stanley Town Council, and elected members as well as local community groups and residents. We've welcomed a parliamentary debate on raising awareness of the need to be safe around water. MPs have this week called for an increase in curriculum content about water safety as part of swimming lessons. We have previously pushed for water safety to be taught to children in schools and we currently run the Dying to be Cool campaign across County Durham schools. We've been working with Durham University, Durham Constabulary and County Durham Furniture Health Scheme to encourage students to think of the planet and their local communities as their move-out of accommodation this summer. Under the award-winning Green Move Out Scheme, at the end of the academic year, students' unwanted belongings are collected and donated to local charities. Last month, our staff and elected members honoured civilian and uniformed personnel on Armed Forces Day by raising the official Armed Forces flag at County Hall. Armed Forces Day is an annual opportunity for the UK to celebrate the work of its Armed Forces and the Armed Forces community, from currently serving troops to service families, veterans and cadets. We have also celebrated the work of our registry office staff on National Registars Day. The team have worked incredibly hard throughout the pandemic to make sure weddings could go ahead and that births and deaths were properly recorded, being there for residents as they have navigated life events during the coronavirus pandemic. So looking forward, on Monday, we will officially submit our bid for County Durham to be named City of Culture 2025. Gaining such status would clearly have untold benefits for the county and the wider region, giving us a platform from which to demonstrate all that is great about our area, from our fabulous landscapes and rich and diverse heritage to our optimism, innovation and economic ambition. Uniquely, our bid will focus not just on the city but on the county as a whole. We are working at pace to pull the bid together in time for the deadline for submissions, but as you well know, County Durham has such a lot to shout about that I am confident we will be able to present an incredibly robust and persuasive case. I will be providing members with an update on the submission within the coming days and in the meantime, I would ask you all, if you can back our bid for City of Culture, it really is a unique opportunity to showcase our rich and varied county at a national level. Next month sees the return of Sea and Food Festival, taking place on Saturday the seventh and Sunday the eighth of August. It will feature top TV chefs, around one hundred traders and producers and some family-friendly fun. The inaugural festival in 2019 saw more than fifteen thousand people flock to the seaside event. Similar footfall this year would make a major boost for businesses working hard to recover from the impact of the pandemic. We are also planning for Lumiere a little later in the year and have just launched an appeal for festival makers to help welcome visitors to the city, direct people to installations and be the face of the festival. We want to hear from those aged eighteen and over who have a friendly personality and a passion for the arts and the festival, as well as different skills and life experiences. We are of course working with event organisers to ensure any coronavirus guidance that is in place at the time is followed. Finally, you'll be pleased to know, we are now counting down to the start of the school holidays next week and there is plenty in County Durham to keep children entertained. Young people can make a splash with free swimming sessions at our leisure centres, designed and encouraged for children and young people to have fun and be more active. To provide extra support for families, some sessions will include healthy food as part of the council's fun and food campaign and more than a hundred free activities with healthy food are lined up for the school holidays as part of the wider programme. And in finishing, I'd like to wish all members, I hope that you do get some rest in the recess after what's been a bit of an epic year, so thank you.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions? Member?
Thank you, Chair, and can I thank the leader for her very comprehensive report. I just want to say how delighted I am that there is one point two million Heritage Lottery funding for the history centre for this. I think the leader described it as an innovative digital programme. What I would like to ask the leader is whether there has been or whether it's intended that there will be exploration with schools as to how it will benefit schools and how it will benefit children and young people going forward. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Leader?
Councillor Gunn for the question. I would expect schools to be a key element within the local history centre. You know my view on supporting children and young people and anything we can do to enhance their development and enhance their local knowledge of the area that they come from. I think we have to take the opportunity, so yes, I fully expect children and schools to be engaged at all levels within the history centre.
Any other questions, members? Can I ask the council to accept the report, note the report? Thank you. Can we move to item five, questions from the public? One question has been received for today's meeting. I would like to hand over to the head of Legal and Democratic Services to explain the procedure. Helen?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. As the chair's indicated, we've received one question today from a Mr Cunningham who is here to ask his question and the chair will invite him in a moment to stand, wait for the microphone and once that's arrived, he can ask his question. The chair will then invite the relevant portfolio holder to respond. Once the question has been asked and answered, there is no discussion or supplementary questions permitted, but the question and answer will be published on the council's website. Thank you.
Can I now invite Mr Mike Cunningham to ask his question, please?
Thank you. Mr Chairman, in June 2015, I asked the council, as the profit made by the Durham crematorium operation came to a third of a million pounds after all reserves were deducted, should the council not advise the crematorium committee to slash the cost of cremations from six hundred and ten pound to a more justifiable figure? As usual, from the last Labour-dominated council, all I received in reply was a verbal brush-off, stating that whatever money was generated over and above the costs of running and maintaining the crematoria plant and facilities would be spent on other activities. I would therefore ask the new joint administration to look again, with the Central Durham Crematorium Joint Committee, at the truly enormous profits, profits, not reserves or whatever term is used, to disguise the fact that the council is making over nine hundred thousand pound profit from cremating the dead, from profiting off the grief of County Durham residents as they continue to run the crematoria as a business and not as a service.
Thank you, Mr Cunningham. Can I refer the question to the Cabinet portfolio holder, councillor Mark Wilkes, to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, Mr Cunningham, for his question and it was good to speak with you before the meeting, sir. I know that you are aware that Durham Crematorium is owned and operated jointly with Spennymore Town Council. Each year, the Joint Committee reviews the fees and charges, considering a range of factors, including the future investment needed through to the prices of other crematoria in the region. We know that the cost of funerals can be difficult for families and considering this, the prices have consistently been set as the lowest in the North East region and well below local private crematoria. In recognition of the challenges families have, the committee have also introduced reduced prices for some services each day, as well as offering families a direct cremation at a reduced cost. There has been ongoing investment at the crematoria over several years, which is now close to four million pounds to improve the facilities and a need to develop reserves for future changes and improvements to be made. There is a surplus that is created each year and distributed to the town council and county council by the Joint Committee. For the County Council, this does help to protect services and supports the rest of bereavement services which covers cemeteries and closed churchyards as well. I appreciate the question raised, my Mr Cunningham, and believe the charges at the crematorium are fair, being that they are the lowest in the region and a wider range of prices have been introduced to help families with any surpluses going back into the community. However, in light of your concerns, I will ensure that your question is raised at the next meeting of the crematoria committee for their further consideration, as this is a decision for the Joint Committee and I hope that they will take into account your views when looking at their pricing structure going forward, something that I will also be monitoring. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can we move now to item six, petitions? One petition has been received and has been presented to the council this morning. Can I hand over to the head of Legal and Democratic Services who will explain the procedure for petitions? Helen?
Thank you, Chair. Mrs Angela Taylor is here today to present the petition and the chair will invite her shortly to come to the lectern where she will have five minutes to present the petition. Once the petition has been presented, there's no debate or questioning on the matter, but the chair will ask council to receive it and that it's referred to the relevant service for a response. Thank you.
Can I now ask Mrs Taylor? Can I now ask Mrs Taylor to the lectern, please? Colleagues, Mrs Taylor is here with us this morning, representing the SPL Community Action Group. The petition Mrs Taylor will present seeks to implement restrictions on HGVs travelling through the villages of Pittington, Littletown, Sherben and Sherben Hill. Mrs Taylor, you have five minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I represent the SPL Community Group and I'm also a resident of High Pitting for over 30 years. I invite all members present, although I do know there are Covid restrictions, as you exit the building, to view some of the items on display, which evidence and reinforce our concerns. The petition was supported by 341 residents, the paper version signed by 174 Pittington residents, 54 Sherben residents, and the e-petition by 113 residents across the four villages. Planning approvals and the massive expansion of the Tailmead Timber Site since its move to Sherben Hill mean that daily HGVs of up to 44 tonnes servicing the site are having a huge impact on the villagers' communities. Their weight, size, loads, speed, frequency and hours of operation are affecting people's wellbeing, mental and physical health, and enjoyment of their homes and their gardens. Noise exacerbated by the speed cushions in close proximity to homes is at an intolerable level. And we do not believe there was proper public consultation prior to their installation. There are very real safety concerns and real risks of injury to pedestrians, other road users and damage to property. The narrow road on the blind hill bend at Low Pittington has to be taken by the HGVs in the middle of the road. And there is documented evidence. I have examples of more photographs. If you'd like to look at those as you leave the building. So sorry, I've lost my track there. It's documented evidence of them regularly mounting the footpath, blocking the carriageway and parking on the wrong side of the road. Curbstones are damaged and in places are only two inches high. There are no railings or other forms of protection for pedestrians, including children, making their way to school. There is no dedicated parking or cycle lanes, and most homes along the route, especially in Pittington, have no garden frontage. Large bark shards, similar to these. There's more on display. Sorry, excuse me. Beg your pardon. A shed regularly from open trailers, and chains and straps have been recovered from the carriageway. I've also left an example. HGVs have been documented reversing down a hill towards the site entrance at Sherben Hill. And there has been intimidation at pinch points, the chicane, road blockages, dangerous overtaking and vehicle damage witnessed, videoed, photographed and reported. Lots of this has already been submitted to the council and to the highways office and to the police. Residents closest to the carriageway fear structural damage to their homes due to the significant vibration as the HGVs pass. There are also two old historic bridges in Pittington, which are now only subject to very limited inspection, which I believe is now between five and eight years. It is noted that on the nearby B1285, weight restrictions, which is in Durham County Council jurisdiction, restrictions of 18 tonnes and long full width speed homes have been introduced. It is on a bus route and with a much wider carriageway and very few terraced homes. There are no unmanned school crossings, narrow blind hill bends, mini roundabouts, crossroads or other hazards on that route. Furthermore, we believe we satisfy all six environmental tests. We ask that the council work with our communities rather than against us to address our longstanding growing concerns, particularly with further likely site expansion. By introducing a 20 mile an hour speed limit, weight restrictions, examine road surfaces, consider removal or introduction of full width longer speed cushions to limit speeding, vibration and noise, limit the number of HGVs using the least suitable routes, carry out origin and destination surveys, and most importantly, examine the safety of the narrow blind hill bend at Low Pittington and the roundabout at Sherben Village. That is to safeguard and protect both the road users.
You have one minute, Mrs Taylor, one minute.
That is to safeguard and protect other road users, pedestrians and property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Taylor. Can I thank Mrs Taylor for presenting the petition and ask the council to receive the petition, which will be forwarded to the appropriate service for which a response is part of the petitions scheme. Thank you. Council agree the petition scheme? Thank you. Can we move to item seven, Report of the Cabinet? Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report, please?
Present the report as tabled within the document.
There has been no questions submitted, therefore I can ask the council to note the report? Thank you. Can we move on to item eight, Initial Proposals for New Parliamentary Constituency Boundaries? Can I invite the head of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair. The Boundary Commission for England are required to make recommendations on new parliamentary constituencies by the 1st of July 2023. The rules governing the review are set out in the Parliamentary Constituencies Act 2020 and include a requirement to retain the overall number of constituencies across the UK at 650. That's based on a distribution formula within the legislation that would increase the number of constituencies in England from 533 to 543. Each constituency, with the exception of five, should have between 69,724 and 77,062 electors per constituency. Currently, across England, the range of electors is between 54,551 and 111,716 across constituencies. And within County Durham, the range is between 61,837 for Easington and 74,016 in North West Durham. The other considerations to be taken into account by the Boundary Commission are set out at paragraph 11 to the report. The proposals in respect of the North East are set out from paragraph 16 onwards. And these proposals are aligned to the combined authority boundaries, with the exception of Gateshead, which the Boundary Commission deal with separately. Across County Durham, South Tyneside and Sunderland, the electorate is 716,893. And there are 10 constituencies proposed. The proposals for the County Durham constituencies are set out from paragraphs 26 to 34 of the report. The Boundary Commission are seeking representations on the proposals by the 2nd of August 2021. And paragraph 36 of the report sets out the points to bear in mind when making representations, including the range of electors that I've already referred to. The review asks that if respondents are not supportive of the proposals, they seek to suggest counter proposals. But in doing so, they need to ensure that they meet the requirements of the review and bear in mind any potential knock-on effect that counter proposals have on neighbouring areas. Council will recall that when the Boundary Commission have conducted previous reviews, there's been an opportunity for council to consider proposals from the Constitution Working Group. However, the timescales for this review don't allow for that. This stage of consultation is only eight weeks compared to 12 weeks in earlier reviews. We're therefore seeking council's agreement that the recommendations are set out in paragraph 7 of the report. And that the Constitution Working Group seeks to agree principles of common ground across the council, which can be submitted by way of a letter to the Secretary of State by the 2nd of August deadline. And if that letter can be agreed, it would be circulated to all members. Thank you.
Can I have a move, please?
Thanks, Chair. As stated by Helen, the timescale for this is tight. There isn't time for another Constitution Working Group and another full council meeting before it has to be submitted. And therefore, we're asking council to agree to the recommendations as stated out in item seven, that the Constitution Working Group seek to agree in principle common ground and by way of a letter to the Boundary Commission. So I formally move that, Chair.
Can I have a second, please? Do any members wish to speak on the report? Can I ask the council to agree that the Constitution Working Group seek agreement to any principles of common ground and submitted by letter to the Boundary Commission by the 2nd of August 2021? And that the letter to be shared to all members in any principles of common ground can be agreed? Okay, members? Thank you. Can I move on to item nine, Appointment of the Independent Persons to the Standards Committee? Can I invite the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. In January, I presented a report to council seeking approval to the recruitment of two new independent persons in relation to the Standards Committee and to an amendment to the Constitution covering the duration of term of office for such persons. Following the agreement to these proposals, this report presents the outcome of the recruitment exercise that has been completed and seeks council approval for the appointment of Alan Fletcher and Kayleigh Louise Wilkinson as the independent persons to the Standards Committee with their term of office starting on the 22nd of September for a term of two years. The recruitment process that was followed is set out in paragraphs 12 and 13 to the report. There was a strong field of seven candidates and interviews were held on the 21st and 23rd of April. I'd like to place on record my thanks and ask the council to also formally place on record their thanks to the outgoing independent persons to the Standards Committee, John Dixon Dawson and Peter Jackson, for their service on the Standards Committee since 2016. With that, Chair, the recommendations are set out at paragraph eight to the report. And as members will see, it's proposed that a decision on whether to extend the term of these appointments for a further two years from 2023 is delegated to the Standards Committee. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a move, please?
Thank you, Chair. The independent persons form an important role supporting the Standards Committee in upholding high ethical standards. In accordance with good practice, the monitoring officer consults the independent persons on a wider remit than required by legislation. We had a good response to the advert and I'm pleased to be able to recommend that council appoint Alan Fletcher and Kayleigh Louise Wilkinson as the new independent persons with effect from 22nd of September 2021. Subject to the appointment, the committee and I look forward to welcoming them. Chair, in moving this recommendation in the report, I would like to formally thank the outgoing independent persons, John Dixon Dawson and Peter Jackson for their service to the committee since 2016.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Yeah, I'd just like to formally second the report. And I think I'd just like to thank, obviously, the work that's gone in the past by the independent persons. I think in the era that we have today, where social media and Facebook, in particular the week that we're in this week with what we see with our footballers and the abuse that they've suffered. But social media is increasingly a problem with the work that we do on the Standards Committee. And the contribution that's going to be made by the new independents will be important in addressing that important issue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do any members wish to speak on this report? Can I ask the council to agree the recommendations detailed in the report? Thank you. Can we move on to item 10, Appointments to the Business Durham Advisory Board? Can I ask the Corporate Director of Regeneration, Economy and Growth to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is to agree the appointments to the Business Durham Advisory Board. The Business Durham Advisory Board acts in an advisory capacity to the council to provide a partnership of public and private sector membership to inform the council's business support services that are delivered through our Business Durham Service, which is part of the Regeneration, Economy and Growth Directorate. On May the 26th, the council considered a report proposing a number of appointments to joint bodies in the current municipal year. And the report noted that seven members are appointed to the Business Durham Advisory Board and the County Council. And in previous years, six positions have been appointed from the largest group and with the second largest group appointing a final member. The members from the largest group have traditionally included the Chair of the council, Leader of the council, Deputy Leader and the respective Cabinet portfolio holders for economic regeneration, housing and assets. And the board has also included a climate change lead to ensure the links between economy and environment. For consistency, it's proposed that the membership remains with the thematic Cabinet portfolios as per the previous year, meaning that six members from the Joint Administration Group to the council. And there will also be one place for the Leader of the Opposition Group and also the opportunity, in the event that the Leader of the Opposition Group is not available, to nominate a deputy from this group. Chair, I'd just finally highlight that the role of the Business Advisory Board is to provide advice on the core functions delivered through our Business Durham Services, particularly around business support, but also insofar as our support services support economic growth. And we're particularly keen to get the insight and experience through our private sector partners on the board. Section eight of the report just highlights the three thematic representative groups who were covered on the board. Chair, the recommendations are set out in section six of the report and focus on the membership as I've set out in the document. And I think that concludes my presentation to full council.
Thank you. Can I have a move on the report, please?
Chair, in moving the report, I just want to highlight the amendment that we've made, which is the appointment of a deputy for the Opposition Group. I always thought that was an issue going back because as the leader of the opposition, if I was unable to attend, then there was no, I couldn't have a replacement, I couldn't send a substitute. And I think it's right that we correct that now and therefore propose that we move the recommendations as tabled, including that the Opposition Group have the ability to appoint a representative in the event that the named person can't attend. Thank you.
Can I have a second for this report, please? Richard, wait until the mic comes down. Do any members wish to speak on this report? No members requested. Can I ask the council to approve the amendments detailed in the report? Thank you. Can we move to item 11, County Durham Youth Justice Plan, 2021-2022? Can I ask Martin Stanton, Head of Early Help, Inclusion and Vulnerable Children, to present the report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. This report covers the youth justice plan for the year ahead, highlights some of our key achievements and service improvement priorities. Producing a plan like this is a statutory requirement for us and it's a condition of the grant we receive each year from the Youth Justice Board. In producing the plan, we followed detailed guidance from the Youth Justice Board. We submitted it to them by the end of June, which was their deadline, and we approved it at our multi-agency Youth Justice Management Board. The plan's in two parts. It covers a review of performance and activity last year and details about the service improvement plan, our staffing and our budgets for the year ahead. A few highlights about our performance. Performance of the service is measured against some nationally set measures. Performance of the service is measured against some nationally set measures and we've noted in the report that figures are more historical than would otherwise have been the case due to the impact of Covid on national data work. First time entrance to youth justice service is measured by the rate per 10,000 of 10 to 17 year olds. The latest data shows the rate in County Durham is 179 per 10,000, which we're pleased to say is lower than the England rate and the North East region rate. For re-offending, the data shows a significant and welcome reduction in our re-offending rate, which is down from nearly 50% to 39%. Our rate of custodial sentences and the number of remand bed nights has also reduced, which is welcome news. We continue to try and do a lot of work with victims of crime, both young people and adults and over 2021, we did restorative work with 137 people. We're very pleased that the service was successful at the National Children Young People Now Awards earlier in the year and won an award for our work with parents. Despite the lockdown challenges, our support group for young victims of crime, which they've called themselves with youth in mind, has continued to develop and we're working with around 35 young people at any time. The service continues to prioritise its work with young people who are persistently offending. This includes an enhanced intensive and trauma-informed model of working with this group of young people. Like all services, we've had to adjust our service procedures a number of times due to Covid and the prevailing restrictions in place. Since March 2020, the service operated with the approach of we'll undertake all the same things as before, how we do them might be different. Within the plan, we've included our service improvement priorities for the year ahead, which also link into our work in terms of inspection, preparation. We've also tried to include some feedback from young people and their parents to help demonstrate how the service continues to make a difference in families who are affected by crime. So turning to the recommendations Chair, council is invited to note the contents of the report, receive the plan and the performance summary for 2021. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Martin. Do any members wish to speak on the report? Council go on.
Thank you Chair. Apologies for not saying who I was last time I spoke, councillor Oringun, Wellington and Hunwick Division. And I thank Martin very much for his presentation. I realise that the plan is a local authority statutory duty and I very much welcome this plan and commend our youth justice service for all of their excellent work over many years. It is Chair, like many of our services, not well funded, but the work carried out by this team far exceeds the funding provided. It really has been a great privilege for me to work with this service and I wish them well. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Can I remind members to use your device on your desk for questions? Is there anyone wants to ask any more questions on this report? Can I ask the council to receive the Youth Justice Plan for 2021-2022 and performance summary for the period 2020-21? Members? Thank you. Can we move to item 12? The Overview and Scrutiny Annual Report 2020-2021. Can I ask councillor Craig Martin, Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board to present the report please?
Thank you Chair. As the current Chair of Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, I present this report to the County Council. This report covers the period of time that my predecessor, when they led the scrutiny function. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Crute, councillor Beatty and all the previous chairs and vice-chairs of scrutiny for their service and work in scrutiny. I've no doubt Chair that councillor Crute will probably want to say something on it. Thank you.
Councillor Crute?
Thank you Chair, councillor Rob Crute for the Blackhall Ward. I'm currently Deputy Leader of the Labour Group but as Craig mentioned, I was formerly Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board and in that past capacity I present to council the scrutiny annual report for 2020 to 21. This report covers a very difficult year for our communities as we faced a global pandemic, the result of which paused our work programme until emergency legislation was in place and we could restart our scrutiny committees remotely. Even then, we had to reprioritise the scrutiny work programmes with a reduced timetable of meetings and shortened agendas. I'm pleased to say we managed to carry out some good quality scrutiny work albeit in very difficult circumstances. This work's reflected in the pared-down annual report you have in front of you this morning, which sets out the range of work undertaken to constructively support the council and its partners. As Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board and with my Vice-Chair at the time councillor Alison Beatty, we implemented the scrutiny process in accordance with the four principles of effective scrutiny as defined by the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny and these are to provide a constructive critical friend challenge, to amplify the voices and concerns of the public, to be led by independent-minded people who take responsibility for their role and to drive improvement in public services. And I'd like to give you just a few examples this morning of the work we covered. Review work was limited last year and there were no site visits. The Safer and Stronger Communities Committee reviewed the development of a new road safety strategy and the Adults Wellbeing and Health Committee concluded its review examining the extent of JP coverage across County Durham and the range of services offered by JP practices. The Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board scrutinised the Cabinet's medium-term financial plan proposals and our comments were included in the final budget report to council. In these times of continuing austerity and increasing financial uncertainty, this is a significant role and responsibility. We also focused on service improvements such as workplace transformation and smarter working. All of the thematic committees received detailed information on the impact of Covid-19 on the various service groupings and heard plans for recovery. The Adults Wellbeing and Health Committee engaged in a number of statutory consultations on proposed changes to the delivery of health services. The committee concluded its review of JP provision and presented the findings and recommendations to the Cabinet, the Health and Wellbeing Board and the CCG's Primary Care Committee. The committee also oversaw the Local Outbreak Management Plan for the Covid-19 pandemic and also continued to monitor the progress of plans for the future service provision for those services currently delivered at Shottley Bridge Hospital. Children and Young Peoples' Scrutiny Committee chaired by councillor Heather Smith at the time carried out a review of elective home education and prior to lockdown, the committee continued its practice of engagement with young people with a successful meeting held in Durham Johnson School. The Economy and Enterprise Committee monitored and commented upon the proposed selective licensing scheme for County Durham, considered the continued development of key strategic employment sites and continued to monitor the progress of the County Durham Plan and the housing strategy for County Durham. The Environment and Sustainable Communities Committee chaired by councillor Eddie Adam undertook a review of Durham County Council's proposed future allotment policy. The committee provided a comprehensive response to the climate emergency consultation and will continue to monitor progress on the Climate Emergency Response Plan and DCC's Carbon Management Plan. The Safer and Stronger Communities Committee chaired at the time by councillor David Boyce provided comment on the Safe Durham Partnership Plan and the County Durham and Darlington Fire and Rescue Services Community Risk Management Plan. Finally Chair, I'd like to give my thanks to members of the Overview and Scrutiny Committees, to the Co-op Dees, to the Chairs and Vice-Chairs, perhaps most important of all the scrutiny team for their continued hard work and commitment throughout this difficult year. Chair, that's just a brief overview of some of the work scrutiny's been involved in over the last year and there's much more detail in the report which I now present to members this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members wish to speak? No one else registered. Can I ask the council to receive the annual report for 2020-2021? Thank you members. Can we move on to item 13? The Annual Report of the Standards Committee. Can I ask councillor John Nicholson, Chair of the Standards Committee to present the report?
Thank you Chair. Councillor John Nicholson, Anfield Plain Division. Ordinarily, there would be an opportunity for councillor Callett as the Chair of the Committee for the period covering the report to speak on it, however, he is unable to attend the meeting today. Prior to my appointment as Chair of the Committee in May this year, I have been a longstanding member of the Committee and I am pleased to present this report. The report covers the period 2020 to 2021. It details the membership of the Committee including the Parish and Town Council representatives and two independent persons. Throughout the year, the Standards Committee adopted a work programme consistent with the terms of reference which are shown within the report, paragraph 13. Whilst the committee meeting schedules was disrupted by the Covid pandemic, it has completed the majority of its work programme for the year. The Committee met informally in July 2020 to comment on the Local Government Association draft Model Code of Conduct. Following the publication of the final Model Code in December, the Committee reviewed the council's Code of Conduct and made recommendations to the council, which were agreed in March 2021, to amend the code so that it reflects best practice. The Committee has also overseen the recruitment arrangements for the independent persons to the Committee which have been presented to council at appropriate times, including at today's meeting. In respect of complaints, members will see from the report that there were 48 complaints in 2020-2021, which is similar to the number of complaints received for the year previously at 49. Of the complaints, 16 compared with eight in the previous year were referred for local resolution, which included trading, training, mediation and to provide apologies. In December 2020, a standards hearing panel was convened to consider a Code of Conduct complaint. The panel found that there had been a breach of the Code of Conduct and required the member to provide a written apology to the complainant and complete training. Looking ahead, the Committee has agreed a work programme for the 21-22 which includes the standing agenda items as well as a review of the arrangements for the co-opted members of the town and parish council and a review of the complaints procedure. Finally Chair, I would like to thank the previous Chair for the period of 2020 to 2021 and the monitoring officer and her team for the continued work with the Committee in assisting to ensure the highest standards are achieved by all locally elected members. I ask the council to note the report.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Tinsley?
Thank you Chair. Just like to formally second the report and again associate myself with the comments of councillor Nicholson and particularly thank the previous Chair councillor Callett and the Vice-Chair councillor Huntington for all the work and all members of the Committee that did the work over the last year. One thing if I could say, the best standards committee is one that doesn't have to meet because the behaviour of ourselves as councillors and councillors in town and parish councils across the county is impeccable and I look forward to hopefully not having to meet or meeting as few times as possible over the next year. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. No more registered. Can I ask the council to receive the annual report of the Standards Committee please? Thank you members. Can we move on to item 14? Motions on notice. Three motions have been submitted for today's meeting. They will be dealt within the order in which they were received and are detailed on the agenda. I will now hand over to Helen Lynch, Head of Legal and Democratic Services, to remind us of the procedure rules regarding motions.
Thank you Chair. So as usual, the standard rules of debate apply. Movers of motions have five minutes to speak and secunders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion other than the mover who has a three-minute right of reply before the vote. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate moves to that amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time and no further amendments can be moved until the amendment under discussion has been dealt with. Each member can speak once on an amendment except for the mover of the original motion who has a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote but may not otherwise speak on it. If following the vote, an amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion.
Okay. Councillor Wilkes, I understand that you wish to withdraw your motion?
Mr Chairman, colleagues, I'm pleased to report that the four leaders of the Joint Administration have agreed to write to government to ask for the retention of the universal credit uplift. This ensures we get our message across to government the impact of removing the uplift in September would adversely affect County Durham residents. On that basis, I'm happy to withdraw my motion which has the added benefits of shortening the meeting and not having to listen to me too much. Thank you Chair.
Can we move straight to the next motion please? Councillor Crute? Can you move your motion please?
Thank you Chair. Two reports submitted to the council's cabinet last week confirmed what we've all known for years, that a decade of needless austerity has had a devastating impact on this council's finances and in turn on the paper and communities of County Durham. Since the Tory-Lib Dem coalition first got together back in 2010, around £247 million in central government funding has been lost to this council alone, all in the name of political austerity designed to punish the poor for the mistakes of the rich. The impact of austerity on local authority services has been significant, with funding for children's social care being particularly hard, paid particularly hard and the costs of adult social care being essentially abandoned by government and burdened onto local council taxpayers through the 2% adult social care precept. It's noted in figures released recently by the Local Government Association that spending power across County Durham has been reduced by £343 per household since 2011, while other local authorities across the country, notably those in Wokingham and Surrey, have seen an actual increase in their household spending power. In addition, these years of unnecessary cuts have led to an extremely uncertain financial outlook for this council, caused in part by persistent delays to the government's comprehensive spending review, its business rate retention scheme and its fair funding review and all compounded by the seemingly permanent delays to the government's proposed funding model for social care. Cumulative impact of this constant delay can be seen in almost every town and village in County Durham and also in the restrictions imposed on this council in properly planning ahead, particularly in the medium to long term, as set out in last week's outturn report to Cabinet which highlighted significant risks to the council's funding. That's not my emphasis, that was mentioned in the report to Cabinet last week. With that in mind Chair, we believe it's high time this government finally got its act together and began to deliver on its promise to level up across all parts of the country by properly funding local authority services to the needs of their residents instead of handing over tens of billions of pounds of public money on contracts for failed schemes to their friends and neighbours. In other words, it's time to put need before greed. Therefore, this council resolves to write to the Prime Minister and call on the government to demonstrate its commitment to levelling up by ensuring this local authority that it will not lose out financially as a result of the government's ongoing fair funding review, business rate retention scheme and forthcoming comprehensive spending review and also commit to resolving the funding crisis in adults and children's social care and the uncertainty, potential risk and financial burden it creates for this council and the paper of County Durham. Chair, I'll put the resolution.
Motion need a seconder?
Thank you Chair, Councillor Alwyn Gunn-Willington and Honourable Division. Firstly, I would like to commend Councillor Crewe on his very well-presented and very elegant presentation of the motion, which highlights all of the relevant parts that need to be drawn to the attention of government and which members will be very well aware after years of government cuts to local authority funding. There is no doubt, Chair, that local government has borne the brunt of government austerity policy measures over the last 10 years and this Council has responded in a way that has not been recklessly extravagant or wasteful in the use of resources. But, and I hope government take note, we've done it by being financially astute, innovative and fiscally responsible. And as a Council, we have made it clear, as have many other local authorities and the Local Government Association, that central government needs to acknowledge the extremely important role that local government has in working with our communities and our businesses. Local government is uniquely placed to lead recovery from 10 years of austerity and recovery from coronavirus, as long as resources are provided to do it. This motion, Chair, is not just about short-term measures or an extension of the bidding culture. It's about a sustainable, longer-term financial settlement for local government on every possible level. The second part of the motion, which Councillor Crewe has referred to, talks about the funding crisis in children's and adult social care, both of which have been under immense financial pressure for years.
One minute left, Councillor.
Thank you. And it is because, only because, this Council has prioritised these services to protect the vulnerable, that the whole system of care has not crashed around us over the past decade. Adult social care costs have risen by £8.5 billion nationally, whilst total funding has grown by only £2.5 billion. The Chair of the Children's Social Care Review said, "The system is a 30-year-old tower of Jenga held together by sellotape." I know that it queaks and it groans and it pleads for help and this Council has stepped up over 10 years to help and support. Our staff have stepped up and given the most valuable service and I applaud them. But we know that applause is not enough and this Council has a duty to fight for adequate funding and to take this fight to the Prime Minister.
Okay Councillor, you have to end it now, please.
I've finished Chair, I'd just like to second this motion.
Thank you. Any other members? Councillor Bell?
Thank you Chairman, I move an amendment to the motion, which I hope will be circulated shortly. It has previously been circulated to all group leaders, therefore it shouldn't come as a surprise to most people. I would hope it would be displayed on the screen as well. No, not being displayed on the screen. In that case, I would ask that the clock be stopped while we wait for this motion, this amendment, to be circulated.
We'll do that, Councillor.
Thank you.
Members, if you remember at the last meeting, we were asked to consider if we should share amendments, different to reduce the paper usage. We've looked in, however, it is important that all members and any present public attending are clear on the amendment, what the amendment is and what we are voting on at a particular time. The amendments are printed on recycled paper and I would encourage every member to recycle them all at the end of the meeting. Thank you Members.
Thank you Chairman, I think everybody's got a copy of the amendment now and in which case I will move the amendment as printed and speak to it as follows. Councillor Crewe was at Cabinet last week and heard the reports on Medium-Term Financial Plan 12 and the Outturn for 2021 and I would encourage all members to read those reports to help their understanding of the Council's position. In summary, I said then that the only certainty across the next four years is uncertainty. Uncertainty over future demand for our services, uncertainty over how far paying users of our services will go back to using them, uncertainty over the total amount of money available to the Chancellor, uncertainty how much she will give to local government, uncertainty about how that will be divided up, fair funding review, public health funding, business rates retention, devolution, you name it. The motion calls for certainty, I would agree with that. We must be careful what we ask for though, we do not want certainty at all costs. A rushed certainty may be a harsh one. We want a just and fair certainty. The motion calls for us not to lose out, I would agree with that. So why amend the motion? The motion speaks of a funding crisis in adults' and social care. There is no crisis in adult social care in County Durham. Members must take their information from our Council reports and not from primary school-level BBC national news reports. Our adult services have come in under budget in each of the last three financial years, a product of the combination of excellent management of these budgets by officers and initiatives like our Social Care Academy and also the additional funding we have received from government through the Better Care Fund, the Improved Better Care Fund and through the ability to lever the adult social care precept to raise funding for these services. The previous Labour Cabinet and Council did not think adult social care was in crisis either. In February this year, they applied a 1% adult social care precept. It could have gone up by 3%. We're allowed to apply 3% increase in any combination we wanted. But the Labour Council chose to apply only a third of the adult social care precept it could have done. It didn't think there was a crisis in adult social care because there wasn't one. The most significant underfunded budget pressure we have, in common with most councils, is in children's services. In the last five years, we have had to put £24 million of growth into our budgets to meet pressures in our Look After Children service. The number and more importantly the complexity of cases of children needing to be looked after has meant that we have had to grow our teams to manage these caseloads and had to commission what are inevitably high-cost placements for these vulnerable children. Across the service, children's services consistently overspend, even if increased budgets. Councillor Henderson, please note.
This funding is a serious challenge, but we are not in crisis and I will not accept false statements about the finances of our services which could spread alarm among our vulnerable service users. The second change in the amendment is to who we write to and who we involve in our campaign for fair, sustainable funding. Councillor Crewe should know that a letter to Number 10 will not get us very far. We need to involve the Secretary of State, who I buttonholed already on this matter recently when we were visiting Bishop Auckland Marketplace. We need to involve our MPs and local government bodies for an organised concerted effort. I am interested in making a real difference to this county, not in today's Facebook post. I gave Councillor Crewe advance sight of this amendment and I hoped he would take the chance to adopt it and make the motion unanimous. I regret that that is not the case. But Members, we came out of the financial year 2021 in a better place than we might have expected. Our Covid losses and costs came to £50.911 million and the government compensation to us came to £53.49 million. Undespends for a variety of reasons meant we were able to augment our earmarked reserves. But as a new Council, we inherit a forecast deficit of £43.7 million over the next four years. Times are challenging, tough decisions may well have to be made. I very much hope not, but to say we are in crisis is an overstatement. So in summary, I can give Councillor Crewe and all members the assurance that the Joint Administration will work with ANEC, Sigoma, the County Council Network and other local government bodies, along with lobbying our MPs to seek the best settlement we can get for the County Council. I will be writing a detailed reasoned case to government, making our case that...
Thank you Councillor.
And with that, I move the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconder please. Seconder please. At the back here, at the back of the hall.
Thank you Chairman, I'd like to formally second the amendment and I would encourage everybody to vote for the amendment. Thank you.
I'll pass over to Helen. Sorry, Councillor Tinsley, if you'd like to say something?
Yeah, thank you Chair, I've listened very intently there to Councillor Bell and his comments on this and he says we're not in a crisis when it comes to children's services in County Durham. So can he tell me why? I opened up my newspaper this morning and I read a report by the Joseph Roundtree Foundation and I'm sure he'd agree with me that they're not a primary-level research body. Tinpot, I think, was the comment. And Joseph Roundtree Foundation, they tell me that one in three children in the North East are living below the generally recognised poverty line. What's even worse, it's one in five children of our key workers who've done so much to support us through this pandemic. So I think, I'm sure that many of you and many on the other side of this chamber would agree, those figures do say it's a crisis. If that's not a crisis, what is? And the bigger point here is, what's the situation? As Councillor Gunn has said, County Council services are critical to delivery of services for children across County Durham. We have cut them, not we, as a country, the government, we have cut them by over £250 million per annum since 2011. I'll just give you another little example there, the figures. The previous motion we had there was talking about universal credit. Do you know, over four years, that cut in universal credit of £20,000 a week for the £20 a week for 34,000 claimants in County Durham equates to £164 million we've taken out of this economy. And that's out of the pockets of people, who many of them have children who are in a real sort of difficult situation. So I will say that this is a crisis that we're facing and I will not be supporting the amendment because I disagree with his premise that it isn't. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Gunn?
Thank you Chair, responding to Councillor Bell's remarks, I'm disinclined to be insulting, but I do find this to be a very petty amendment. Councillor Bell talks about certainty in funding being absolutely essential, but not rushed certainty. Can I just remind him that we've been waiting 10 years for funding? There's nothing rushed about this. What we're asking for is what we've been asking for for 10 years. I do believe that his remarks about adult services not being in crisis to be quite bizarre, frankly. And when he talks about the fact that the previous Labour administration raised the adult precept by 2%, I think you have to consider as well that we were taking into consideration what was affordable for residents in our county, as well as everything else we had to do in coping with the austerity cuts. As for false statements, there are no false statements in either the mover of this motion or the seconder of this motion or other speakers, no false statements. And can I just say that I find it absolutely extraordinary that Councillor Bell has actually stood there and admitted that a letter to the Prime Minister of this country will get us nowhere? How extraordinary is that from a Tory leader, from the Tory administration of this Council? I'm absolutely appalled that that could be said. I am opposed to this amendment and its pettiness.
One minute left, Councillor.
It does nothing to bring anything to this motion. This motion should stand in its entirety and I oppose this amendment Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Quinn?
Thank you Chair, Councillor Shirley Quinn from Shilton in Dean Valley. I want to speak on behalf of home carers and carers in nursing homes and carers in general. You know, these have been key workers that have supported this country through thick and thin. These are people that go the extra mile on a daily basis. These are people that are on minimum wage, that go out and are working literally from seven o'clock in the morning till up to 10 o'clock in the night, if not longer. These are people that will pick up shifts whenever they are needed to. These are people that just will do whatever is needed for their clients, for the people in need in this county. And I employ that this motion is, you know, this amendment is rethought. These are a few words and to say that this is not in crisis... There was actually a lady on the television last night, a home carer, that stated that she left the house at six o'clock in the morning, got back at 10 o'clock in the night. She had to move in with her father because she could not afford rent of her own and then she was literally off to bed as soon as she had something to eat. And this is, this is the facts and I'm afraid I've got to say this and you need, I'm sorry Councillor Richard Bell, you really do need to talk to home carers and carers in nursing homes and people caring for people in their own homes with family members because honestly, it is a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to let you know Members, you have 10 minutes remaining on this motion. Any other Members?
Sorry Chair, just to clarify, there's 10 minutes left in total for the time allowed for motions. Councillor Wilkes is registered to speak next.
Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you Chair, I wasn't going to speak on this motion because I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Just one second, Councillor Crewe. Have you had a seconder, please?
Sorry, we've had a motion without notice to suspend the Council procedure rule in respect of the time allowed for motions so that the debates can go on beyond the time allowed of 30 minutes. The motion has been moved, it requires a seconder.
It's been seconded.
Councillor Sirtes has seconded the motion without notice to suspend the Council procedure rule.
Greek, Councillor? No, Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you Chair, I wasn't going to speak on this because I thought it was pretty straightforward. The Councillor Crewe's motion said write to the Prime Minister and Councillor Bell's added to also write to the Secretary of State for Housing, Communities and Local Government and to ask to work with local government to find sustainable, long-term funding solutions and that this Council resolves to work with the county's MPs, Local Government Association and County Councils Network to make our case to government. So I'm just baffled as to why nobody would want to support us working with everybody we can to make sure that this Council can be the best Council in the country. So I'll be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Miller?
Councillor Miller for Trimpton.
Councillor Miller for the Trimpton and Thornley division. There's an adult and children's social care crisis in the whole country, so to say that County Durham is exempt is very much untrue. Myself, councillor Hovells, councillor Varty, we deliver food parcels every week, deliver to support to every, you know, across every village in our division. And to say that there isn't a crisis is an insult to those who are in need of that support and in need of that care. And best council in the country, one of the leaders of the coalition has just said that there isn't a crisis, that's not the best council in the country as far as I'm concerned. We need to take a bigger stance and I'll be voting against this amendment.
councillor Keon.
Thank you Chair, I too wasn't going to speak on this amendment, but I was moved by what councillor Bell said. There is a crisis in social care in this county, in this country, but that doesn't negate the fact that we have a crisis in our economy too. And good governance is about balancing things like this. And I don't think that I would ever hear a Tory criticizing Labour for not raising taxes on people during a financial crisis. That's a new one, I'll chalk it up on my 2021 bingo. And on the topic of social care, I'd like to thank councillor Quinn for what she said and a lot of people will know that I myself am a carer, I'm an unpaid carer for my 91-year-old grandmother who has chronic arthritis and has mini strokes as well. I basically have three full-time jobs. I have the duty that I have to my residents that I represent, I have the full-time job that pays my bills and I look after my grandmother. And can I just tell councillor Bell, if there isn't a crisis in social care, then how come I don't stop working until 11:30 at night? How come I have to go through every single day exhausted because I shoulder these responsibilities and it is difficult for us to access the kind of support that we need? I'd like to talk to councillor Bell outside of this meeting about my experiences and the experiences of families like mine. And just on councillor Wilkes's comments, the reason why we're in opposition to this is because of the tone that councillor Bell took and the points that he raised as a justification for this motion which really do need addressing. Quite frankly, I'm worried that such callous remarks and attitudes can come from the man who holds the purse strings of the whole county. It's chilling for me, as I'm sure it's chilling for the rest of my family and families like mine across the county, that this man will be in charge of our budgets going forward. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before I invite councillor Crewe to give his rate of reply? Anyone else wishes to speak? Rob?
Thank you Chair, I will be brief. I concur with the heartfelt comments made by my friends on this side of the room. I don't think you can magic away a crisis in social care by using semantics. And that's all this amendment's about. It's about taking ownership of this motion. It doesn't change the gist of the motion that I've put forward this morning. To suggest that it's rushed is completely ludicrous. If we look at the delays in the fair funding review, the delays the comprehensive spending review, the delays to the social care green paper which may now be a white paper, nobody really knows because it hasn't seen the light of day. To suggest that that is rushed is on a completely different planet. So I'm suggesting that this is about semantics only. I think what Richard's doing by changing this, we write to the Prime Minister and the Secretary of State at the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government, wherever it's called, is nothing more than semantics because I'm asking that we write to the Prime Minister and urge government to tackle these issues. If Robert Jenrick as the Secretary of State isn't part of that government, then we need to find out what's going wrong in government. So I stick by the motion I've put forward this morning, concur with all the comments that have been made on this side of the room and I reject the amendment as nothing more than semantics and an attempt to take control of this motion. I'll stand against the amendment Chair.
councillor Gunn, you have a power, point of, point of order?
It's not a point of order actually Chair, I want to ask for a named vote on this amendment. Thank you.
Requires the support of 10 people for a recorded vote.
Thank you. Pass over to Helen to tell you the voting.
Thank you Chair, so we've got support for a recorded vote, so the names and the way in which you vote will be taken down and will appear in the minutes of, for the agenda for the next meeting. When voting opens, and I'll indicate when it's open, if you're voting for the amendment moved by councillor Bell, it's one, two against and three to abstain. So that's one, for the amendment as moved and circulated in hard copy, two against, three to abstain. The votes open.
The fourth clause members. For the amendment, 60 votes, against the amendment, 38. There was no abstentions. The amendment carried and becomes the substantive motion. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item as the substantial motion? councillor Wilkes.
Thank you Chair, in order to ensure that we know who does want to contact government to address the issues, I call for a named vote.
Okay members, okay. councillor Tinsley.
To ensure that we're all aware that the government have a track record of not listening to us and being aware, the writing to the Prime Minister is not going to be heard, I'd second the proposal from councillor Wilkes. Thank you Chair.
Is no one else wishes to speak? councillor Bell.
Thanks Chair, I'd just like to respond to some of the comments made by councillors Quinn, McEwan and others. I think there's a fundamental difficulty councillors when councillors don't actually read motions that are in front of them. Language is important. Council motions are really semi-official, almost legal documents and need to be treated with the same care and diligence as you would a planning document or indeed a financial report. And this motion from councillor Crewe was and is a financial motion. It refers to the MTFP, it refers to spending levels, comparisons with our old friends in Surrey, et cetera, et cetera. And it talks about the financial burden it creates for this council. It's essentially a council, a motion on council finance. So you may therefore expect my responses to be essentially about council finance. If you wish to bring up issues about pay levels for carers or home caring or other issues, then bring forward a motion about payments for carers and home carers and other issues. Do not try to bring them forward as a finance motion. Frankly, if I were chairman of this council, I would have ruled most of those contributions out of order because you weren't not even speaking to the amendment, you weren't speaking to the motion, you were making general points about social care. And I will take no lessons from anybody on the issue of social care and caring. I have looked after elderly and our deceased parents, I have looked after an uncle crippled for four years with more neuro disease. I will take no lessons from anybody on your side of the chamber on this subject. I value and understand the work done by voluntary unpaid carers. I value and understand the work done by paid carers. But this motion-
One minute left councillor.
-was not about that, it was about council finance. The amendment, now the substantive motion, was and is about council finance and how best we make our case to government. And I repeat my earlier remark, I am interested in making a positive change for this council and its people and not in today's Facebook headlines. With that Chair, I move the substantive motion. Thank you.
We'll go to the vote members. We'll go to the vote members.
Thank you Chair, so just to remind members, it's another recorded vote, it was supported by more than 10 members. So when the vote opens, you are voting for, the motion is one, against the motion is two, three to abstain. Votes open.
Fourth clause members. For the motion, 96, against the motion, two. There was no abstentions, the motion is carried. Can we move to the next motion please? Councillor Shaw, can you move your motion please?
Councillor Kevin Shaw, Dordon division, moving this motion and rejecting the amendment. And just as a point of order here Chair, the deputy leader of the council stated that motions of this council should be treated the same way we would do planning applications. I've yet to go to a planning committee and halfway through the meeting to be faced with another planning application as we have done with this amendment. The County Durham Housing Strategy, which was introduced in 2019, following two years of very hard work, extensive public consultation, was recently recognised when Durham County Council was named Local Authority of the Year at the Northern Housing Awards. And I'd like to thank all of the officers who worked with me and their former administration to deliver that strategy. And I would like members to reflect upon the strategy, its national recognition and its purpose moving on to this motion. The strategy was written to meet housing needs and demand with specific focus on delivering high quality new homes that meets the needs and aspirations of existing and future residents alongside homes for older people and those with disabilities. And first and foremost, the strategy was written to put people first. And when local needs were to be met, targeted delivery plans were also included. An estimated 8.4 million people in England are living in unaffordable, insecure or unsuitable homes, according to the National Housing Federation. Federation said analysis suggests the housing crisis was impacting on all ages across every part of the country. That was a report from September 2018. Things have become much worse. Across our county, we are not excluded from the national housing crisis. Indeed, many of our towns and villages have never fully recovered from the closure of our pits and the legacy housing problems massively impacting the lives of our communities. We have a waiting list across County Durham for over 10,000 homes for social housing. We have a waiting list of around 3,500 for homes to meet the specific needs of the elderly and disabled. In February 2020, a planning application was approved for 120 homes on the Haswick Field Detention Centre in Meddamsley. Key benefits of the housing scheme were secured in section 106, although this has never been signed off as clearly the ministry have other plans. It would have provided 127 dwellings, provision of 20% affordable housing units, approximately 25 homes, a commuted sum of £558,000 towards increasing capacity for primary and secondary school places, a commuted sum of £338,000 towards a provision to outdoor sport and recreation space, a commuted sum of £18,000 to increase capacity at local medical practices, a commuted sum of £22,000 towards establishing biodiversity, net gain through off-site biodiversity improvement projects. On-site biodiversity improvement works include a 25-year management plan and an appropriate monitoring programme. And there was only a very small handful, 14 objections. The site itself has a very dark past, with well-publicised abuse that ruined the lives of so many, many of whom would take some solace from the centre eventually being raked to the ground and repurposed. We've heard a lot of rhetoric about levelling up from government. Levelling up for people living in Concert at this moment in time means a prison and a dirty incinerator. Move the motion Chair.
Motion would need a second.
Thank you Chair, councillor Angela Sirtes representing Neasent Division, also thematic lead for Labour in communities and inclusion. I stand to formally second the motion. The former site of the notorious Meddamsley Detention Centre for Boys near Concert in County Durham has a toxic history of abuse over several decades, which has resulted in lifelong trauma for the victims. I use the term toxic like my colleague councillor Catherine Rooney did last month in her news article about the same site. For the Home Office to announce that it intends to create an immigration detention and removal centre for women asylum seekers, and I should really say young women because these women would be from 16 years upwards, where appalling historic abuse took place is horrendous. To incarcerate people seeking asylum in this way with no time limit will mean that people subjected to the inhumane practice can face months, if not years, imprisoned in a limbo-like existence with serious negative effects on mental health and wellbeing. I believe that the community of Concert in Meddamsley need a clean break from the site's history of human rights abuse. Human rights groups have raised concerns about the treatment of women in a similar detention facility, for example Yarles Wood in Bedford, which is now expanding into a larger detention centre which will include men. Detainees at Yarles Wood have spoken of racial abuse, poor hygiene and experiences of sexual abuse. Local activists have started the North of Haswick Field campaign. This is a cross-party and cross-community campaign focused on our human rights and human dignity. Since January 21, it has not only gained the support of local people and the North East region, but also national charities and politicians, for example Lord Alf Dubs and Women for Refugee Women, and the police crime commissioner Joy Allen. The campaign is also a- The campaign is also attracting international support. Chair, I urge all members to consider the individuals who will be placed in this centre, think of their human rights and support the motion. I formally second. Thank you.
Councillor Shield?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Alan Shield, one of the two Meddamsley and Ledgate divisional members and also the current portfolio holder for equality and inclusion. I'd like to read the amendment first of all that I'm proposing and then give an outline of the reasons for this amendment. Durham County Council Planning Department approved under officer delegated powers a planning application to demolish the former Hasecfield Secure Training Centre to build 127 new dwellings, including 25 proposed for social housing, and with over £900,000 allocated for section 106 funding. This development was on both the existing footprint of Hasecfield and an adjoining green field, and in our view was considered as predominantly unsustainable rural location. However, in January 2021, the Ministry of Justice revealed plans to develop the site into a category three style immigration removal centre for a maximum of 84 female detainees. As the Northern Echo reported, the Ministry of Justice did not pursue a certificate of lawfulness. However, there was no obligation for the Ministry of Justice to do so, as there was no change of use from the previous Hasecfield Secure Training Centre, Meddamsley Detention Centre. And given that the location is considered as crown land, Durham County Council had no jurisdiction at all to affect the intentions of this government department. So as one of the local members representing the Ledgate Meddamsley Division for some 14 years and being a resident of the Meddamsley village for almost 50 years, focusing regularly on community engagement, interaction, I believe that I am both well-versed and qualified to speak on behalf of the local residents and community. Some background to the planning issue. Local members had been engaged in discussion with Homes England for some time following the closure of the Hasecfield Secure Training Centre some seven years previous. Initially, the plan was to develop a 40 to 60 property development on the actual footprint of Hasecfield. This latterly increased to up to 90 properties. And following engagement between Homes England and Savills Consultancy, this development increased to 150 mixed-sized properties on both the footprint and the adjoining green field in open countryside. Following a public outcry, subsequent public meeting, Homes England reduced the development to 127 properties on both the footprint and the adjoining green field, nothing more than a marketing ploy, we suspect. This delegated decision prevented members and local residents to register their objections in committee. There are perceived breaches of local and national policies. The application was not in line with the schlar, neither was it part of the County Durham plan. It was located in a considerable sustainable, unsustainable location with an increase of over 150% of the actual properties currently there, thereby requiring extensive use of private transport, some 250 to 300 vehicles using already heavily subscribed rural roads. Whilst residents should always welcome the opportunity and benefits of social housing, specifically much-needed bungalows to service an ever-aging population. Oh, and by the way, there was no bungalows planned for this 127 housing development.
You have one minute left, councillor.
Thank you. The former district of Durham and in particular of Concert area has seen extensive housing development. I'm sure one of my colleagues would be specific in that issue. The Home Office decided therefore to establish this location as an IRC, without any engagement with Durham County Council, nor local members or the public at large. It has acknowledged that there is a genuine and sincere concern about potential human rights abuses because of frequently reported maltreatment, racial, sexual abuse that beset detainees in similar holding detention facilities being replicated at this site. Therefore, local members initiated contact with the Home Office representatives as well as the director of Immigration, Removal and Escorting Services, challenging the service delivery within the proposed IRC, which included the provision of appropriate legal representation, effective medical help, and which included mental health and the appropriate opportunity provide a befriending service.
Thank you, Member. Thank you, councillor. I'm afraid that's the finish of that, I'm afraid.
The amendments as listed.
Thank you. Have a second, please.
I'd like to second the amendment by councillor Alan Shield and reserve the right to speak at the end of the debate. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Bell?
Thanks, Chair. I'm not going to say much on this motion because I don't believe that as a council we should discuss matters of general government policy like detention of asylum seaters, seekers or illegal immigrants or anything. And as a matter of general council policy, I think that planning issues are best left to ward members and local planning committees rather than bringing to the floor full council. However, I would just observe that the planning delegated decision occurred on the 10th of February, and I would just observe that it is curious that councillor Shaw has only found his voice in July. What's happened all those months that the Labour Party was in control of this county council? Where was the objection then to this facility? I would just observe further to Labour members that the problem with having a 100-year track record in running a council is that a lot of ghosts will come back to haunt you, and this is just one spectre among a veritable feast. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Wood?
Councillor Danny Wood, Pelton Division. And thank you, Chair. I'd actually like to raise a point of order on this. Whilst I always welcome observations from councillor Bell, I do actually slightly have to start with agreeing with him on something, which is the importance of the wording of motions. So part of what I would like to point out is that I believe there's an incorrect apostrophe in the amendment in paragraph two, and given the importance of these documents, I think we'd like to take that into account. My point of order actually relates to section 10.4 of the Rules on Procedure, and this is largely in relation to the second resolution. So whilst I do accept that the item 12.7 does allow words to be added and words to be removed, which has happened with the body of the motion, and it does allow for items to be referred to an appropriate body, which is part one of the resolution. Part two of the resolution, as it's written, does appear to mandate local members in how they should respond, and I don't believe that's within the remit of this body. I mean councillor Bell's just mentioned planning issues should be left to planning committee and to local members. So as I see it, I don't see how full council can mandate local members to do, to a specific response to a planning issue in their own ward, and I'd respectfully ask that you call this amendment out of order as a result of that. Thank you.
It's not uncommon for council to be asked as part of motions to agree in principle a course of action. We've had examples at the last meeting where it was agreed that, you know, letters would be sent to the secretary of state. My view is, is that this proposal that local members continue to maintain engagement, it doesn't dictate how they, you know, on what basis they maintain that engagement or what stance they take, but it's an in-principle commitment by council that local members and indeed others who are involved in it continue to do that. So I don't think the amendment is invalid on that basis.
Councillor Wood, go.
And thank you. Just very, very briefly, in light of that, would the proposed amendment consider changing it slightly to say that we encourage local members? Because I still feel that as the wording of that's written, it would appear that full council was mandating local ward members. Thank you.
Councillor McDonald?
Peter Lee West. I have to reiterate the comment that was made by Richard as to why we should bring this motion now, when we were well-informed in January that the IRC was going to be, was being planned, and that was actually six months ago. Because in January, when we knew this, why didn't councillor Shaw bring it to the council then? They could have brought it to the full council in January, but they chose not to. Since then, the Justice Department have incurred considerable costs in renovating the facility, whether we liked it or not. So how likely do you think it is that they'll demolish the buildings? Especially now that we know that they've begun the recruitment of 182 new staff members, predominantly from the local community. Knocking down the buildings will not redress the issues of the horrendous abuse that was suffered by the former inmates at Meddamsley Detention Centre, and even the police investigation operation Seabook can only go partway to compensate for what happened to them. Housing is undoubtedly a preferred outcome, social housing in particular. But the bottom line is this, this is crown land, they can do what they want, they can and they will. They've already demonstrated that. And maybe that's why the previous administration chose not to do anything back in January, but we'll never know that. The right and common sense approach to this council should be, well, albeit being delayed by six months, I'll reiterate that again, has been outlined in the amendment by councillor Shield, and for this reason I'll be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Miller?
Councillor Miller, Trumpton and Thornley Division. As a council, all we seem to be doing is writing watered-down letters to government. When are we actually going to see this coalition take a strong stance on a particular issue? Now, for me, the vote's quite clear, we write yet another watered-down letter or we actually represent the people of Concert and Meddamsley and the wider public in County Durham and we take a firm stance on an issue. Now, I know which one I'll be voting for, and I know a lot of people at home and a lot of people in here will be interested to see how others vote, particularly those that put people before politics on their campaign material. Well, let's find out, let's find out if you're going to put the people of County Durham, Concert and Meddamsley before the politics of this coalition.
Councillor McKeon?
Thank you, Chair. Looking at the actual amendment itself and listening to the coalition members talk on this amendment, I haven't heard much justification for the actual changes that have been made to it, which, when you look at it in that sea of red, are quite substantial. The second paragraph, the intervention about the Ministry of Justice not having an obligation to go through those planning processes, it doesn't say so in the motion itself to save space, but actually in the Northern Echo reporting, it does say that they began the process, and then when they realised that there was an element of public scrutiny available through that process, they then aborted it. And I think that that is actually something that's quite concerning, and I do ask colleagues to look at that reporting. The other thing that's really jumping out to me is the fact that the entirety of the third paragraph has been deleted, as is the fourth paragraph, and it's replaced with, it's acknowledged the most detainees in this type of facility aren't criminals, and that 86% of women detained in 2018 secured their freedom and now contribute positively to our society. Now, I understand that some on the other side of the room take umbrage at long preambles to motions. I was taught during my education that if you want to make a point, you have to have your argument to back it up, and so I think that actually they're quite useful. But I'm quite troubled at the fact that people in charge of this council have taken out entire paragraphs on the lived experiences of women who've been treated horrifically in UK government-run detention facilities, and basically said at the bottom, everything seems to be fine in the end. Well, 85% of those women were survivors of gender-based and sexual violence. They were then put into a facility where there were consistent reports of more gender-based, sexual, physical and emotional abuse. 80% of the detainees there had suicidal thoughts, and 30% actually acted on those suicidal thoughts. And for the children who were detained in these facilities...
One minute left, councillor.
For those children, the Children's Commissioner said that they were denied urgent medical care, and I think that this is an act of gaslighting. To delete all of this lived experience of women in these detention facilities, yes, words are important, and actually, it would be good for us as a council just to acknowledge the fact that it happened and not just sweep it under the carpet because it's quite embarrassing for some of our local politicians. Thank you very much. I will definitely be voting against this and also call for a named vote.
We need 10 members to support the recorded vote request.
Thank you, members. Councillor Wilkes?
Thank you, Chair. I concur with councillor Bell regarding the mistakes of the previous Labour administration. To answer councillor McKeown, the Labour motion does not clearly state that this council opposes Hasecfield as a detention centre. The amendment does. The amendment also states we want to see social housing as part of development on this site. And this amendment calls for a smaller development, not building on green fields, in support of what local residents want. And it calls for any development for housing to be predominantly for the elderly, unlike what was brought previously to this council by developers. And it calls for continuous engagement and monitoring, working with all local stakeholders if none of the above is achieved. So this amendment makes this motion far, far better. So I see no reason why we shouldn't support the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Nobody else registered to speak, members? Councillor Rollinson, would you like to speak before? I invite councillor Shaw to have his right of reply.
Thank you, Chair. I didn't introduce myself before. Councillor James Rollinson, Barna Castle East, Cabinet Member for Resources, Investments and Assets. Chair, I'm disappointed with such emotive language and unsubstantiated accusations that have been made in the councillor Shaw's motion. This is very difficult for those who have been affected by historic failures at this site, but has nothing to do with what is being requested here. I also must thank and acknowledge our new county councillors in the Concert area for their swift action on this matter. They have already had a meeting with the Ministry of Justice to raise their concerns for the safety and wellbeing of any prospective residents of the detention centre, and I would urge them to continue in this dialogue when the centre opens. Then we come to the second paragraph of councillor Shaw's motion. It states it was in January that the Ministry of Justice revealed their plans, but according to our planning department, it was in October that councillors Marshall and Shaw had a meeting to discuss the ministry's plans, and it was the planning department's view that the ministry would not need a certificate of lawfulness, as there was no change of use. But here we are. The fans started rolling. The Northern Echo came to the door and asked for some quotes. Where were our intuitions? Do you go? Nowhere to be seen. No explanation of how the specific reason for not having a certificate of lawfulness, there was never a chance which is mentioned.
One minute left, councillor. One minute left councillor.
Thank you. There was never a chance of the residents having a say due to what councillor Shaw had already done. Chair, I would recommend that members support this well-thought-out amendment tabled by councillor Shield. Thank you.
Councillor Shaw, would you like to give your reply before we vote?
Yeah, just very briefly Chair, I don't know if people are not listening when I actually read out the presentation this morning. I specifically said I would like members to reflect upon the housing strategy, its national recognition and its purpose moving on to this motion. The strategy was written to make housing needs and demand a specific focus on delivering high-quality new homes and meet the needs of aspirations of existing and future residents alongside homes for elderly people and those with disabilities. And first and foremost the strategy was written to put people first. If anybody cared to have a look at the housing strategy, I know it's a pretty long and in-depth document, specifically done that way because there was a lot of points to cover, it specifically says in there at least 10% of all new developments must meet the specific needs of the elderly. So any development, it might not be in the rhetoric here, it's actually in the housing strategy that every new development's got to have at least 10% homes to meet the needs of the elderly. Thanks very much.
Thank you councillor. We'll go to the vote. Helen.
Thank you Chair, so we're voting on the amendment as moved by councillor Shield. It's one if you're voting in favour of that amendment, two if you're against it, three to abstain. And just to remind members we had a successful request for a recorded vote so the way in which you vote will appear in the minutes for the meeting. The vote's open.
Members, close the vote. Members for the amendment, 60 votes; against the amendment, 36. There was no abstentions. The amendment is carried and becomes the substantive motion. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the matter before we vote on it as a substantial motion? Councillor Shield, would you like to reply before we vote on your substantial motion?
Thank you Chair, and just some of the comments and very emotive words have been used this afternoon and it's a very tenuous situation that we face but at no time has there been any political movement from this side to outmaneuver the previous administration. The question was asked what previously had been done and local members took it upon themselves to take the interest of the community at heart and approach the immigration services directly and have set up regularly ongoing communications. So therefore Chair, the amendment stands as it is and I hope everybody votes for now being the substantive motion. Thank you.
Put to the vote Members. Thank you.
So the matter is now the substantive motion, one for, two against, three abstain and the vote's open.
Votes closed Members. For the motion, 58 votes; against the motion, 35 votes; three abstentions, the motion is carried. Thanks Members. Can we move now to item 15 on the agenda, questions from Members. One question has been submitted for today's meeting, can I ask councillor Craig Martin to ask his question please?
Councillor Craig Martin, North Lodge in Chesley Street. Council, all train operators are beginning a consultation on new timetables that run across the North East. Can Cabinet assure the council that they will use all avenues available to them to lobby operators for more services and the best possible timetable, in particular to improve the current terrible service for Chesley Street railway station? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask the cabinet portfolio holder councillor Elizabeth Scott to respond please?
Thank you Chair, yes Elizabeth Scott, portfolio holder for Economy and Partnerships. Firstly, I'd like to thank councillor Martin for the question. The Government have set out that the purpose of the East Coast Mainline consultation is to try and deliver benefits from the current round of investment such as the infrastructure work in Peterborough and London King's Cross and the new higher-performance IEP Azuma fleet built at Highington. However, despite this investment it is acknowledged that there still remains severe capacity constraints on the line particularly north of North Allerton which has a negative impact on the North East. The proposals currently being put forward by the train operators led by NLER for County Durham are mixed with an hourly service at Chesley Street provided by Trans Pennan Express rather than the current one train every two hours, something long called for by local residents. By contrast there are dis-benefits in Durham city which will see a reduction of eight trains per day with some services bunched together leaving larger timetable gaps for passengers. The changes would also potentially undermine the long-term future of the links from the East Coast Mainline to Bishop Auckland. We also recognise that many other locations across the region are seeing a reduction in services. We remain committed to working at a regional level and support the calls from the Joint Transport Committee for a task force to be established to examine capacity constraints and put forward options to solve both long and short-term issues. We also support the request from the Joint Transport Committee that such a task force should plan to introduce timetable changes slowly aligned with capacity growth and with no detriment to existing connectivity. You can be assured that throughout this process we will be seeking to deliver improvements both at a regional and county level and I've made my views clear on this through the Regional Joint Transport Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, that was the last item on the agenda. Oh sorry, sorry Craig.
No problem Chair. Chair, just to come back on what councillor Scott said there, you mentioned the Joint Transport Committee. Councillor Scott, in the event that the region-wide response to these consultations does not serve the best interests of County Durham, will you make sure that you give a firm voice against the Joint Transport Committee proposals and provide a clear pro-County Durham response please?
Yes, I've been now just twice to the Joint Transport Committee. On both occasions I have highlighted how pleased we are about the suggestions for Chesley Street but also the need to balance the wider needs of County Durham and I will continue to press on that front. Our voice is currently being accepted as being the correct feedback from County Durham from its residents and I believe that's how the consultation will be responded to.
Members, that was definitely the last item on the agenda and concludes today's business. Before the meeting finishes I'd like to thank everyone for taking part and those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting. We will return in September with the venue to be confirmed in due course. Sorry.
Point of order, could I ask for a verbatim written report on the Hasecfield debate because accusations may have been made which I may wish to take up with the legal department.
The request is noted councillor Shaw, the broadcast has been filmed and is available to view on YouTube. If you leave the request for a transcript with me so I can consider how I could resource that. Thank you.
So and those members of the public and media who have watched this meeting, we will return in September like I said with the venue to be confirmed in due course. Well thank you for your attendance. The hall, just one second, the hall is now going to be emptied one row at a time. You will be asked to exit the hall in a safe and considered way. It would be helpful if you could please leave your handsets and registration cards on the table. These will be collected once everyone has vacated the hall. And thank you again for your attendance.